Hello, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you? Do we have a... Do we're up, or are we waiting for people?
Looks like we're waiting for, uh... Most of the council.
I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Hi, Councilmember Fimbres.
Good to see you.
Been a long time, so... I'm not surprised you're here. All right.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazadchik?
I'm here, here, here.
Mayor Romero?
Here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, uh... For making it to the special meeting of, um... Mayor and Council. This meeting was called by myself, um... For... So that we can fill the... The vacancy left by Councilmember Durham. I want to take this opportunity again to thank Councilmember Durham for his service to the residents of Ward 3 in the city of Tucson. That, um... I appreciate his service to our community, and I wish him the best, um... With, uh... Him and, uh... And his husband. I just wanted to open up by saying that our city charter is clear and explicit about the process for filling vacancies on the Tucson City Council. The city charter states that the process is that Mayor and Council fill that vacancy. Any steps taken beyond that action is frosting on the cake. So with that, I'd like to move to item two. Um... Item two, we will begin by having the city attorney outline the legal provisions related to the filling of the Ward 3 vacancy. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um... The first thing that I would ask is that, uh... The Mayor and Council, uh... By motion, uh... Formally accept, uh... Councilmember Durham's written resignation and declare the vacancy existing as of 5:00 today. Um... That will just establish a very clear record, uh... During these proceedings.
Sure.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you. Um... So now that the vacancy exists, uh... The charter provision in Chapter 8, Section 2, uh... Of the city charter, uh... Applies, and this provision was revised, um... By vote of the... Of the people in 1997. Uh... And its provisions, which we discussed, uh... At the study session on February 23rd, uh... And are included in the Mayor and Council communication, but I'm going to go through them, uh... Again here. Uh... As the mayor already stated, under that section of the charter, the appointment to a person to fill the vacancy that now exists in the Ward 3, uh... Council office is made by the Mayor and Council as a governing body. So each of the elected officials, the mayor and each remaining council member, have a vote, uh... On the... Uh... On the appointment to fill the vacancy. Uh... The person who is appointed by the Mayor and Council, uh... Must be a qualified elector. Uh... And under our charter, um... For qualification to office as a council member, that really means two things. It means the... The person appointed has to be a qualified elector, residing in the city for at least three years and residing within, uh... Ward 1... Excuse me, Ward 3, uh... For the last one year. Um... The appointment by the Mayor and Council to a person to fill this vacancy must occur at either a regular or a special meeting that was called for this purpose, um... Which... This meeting tonight has been called for the purpose of the appointment, uh... To this... To fill this vacancy. Upon qualification, any person who is in fact appointed by the Mayor and Council, uh... To fill the vacancy will serve for the balance of the existing term. Uh... And as we've discussed and I put in the communication, uh... We're awaiting a Supreme Court decision that will affect, one way or another, uh... The balance of that term. Under our charter, um... The balance of the term as it exists right now, um... Will be until December of 2021. It would only be if the court, uh... Determines that state law overrules our charter, um... That that term would in fact extend for an additional year to December of 2022. And I do want to note that, uh... The Mayor and Council, uh... As a body gave direction at the last meeting, February 23rd meeting, uh... With respect to the proceedings that will occur here during this special meeting, uh... Tonight. Um... Specifically, the... The Council's, um... Direction included the fact that the interested persons, uh... Who, uh... Would like to be, uh... Appointed to the... Fill this vacancy would need to submit their letters of interest and resumes by Friday of February 26th. And the... The city clerk has provided you with the information of... Of who those folks are. Um... The qualifications, of course, that I described earlier have to be met by the folks who submitted their letters of interest. Uh... And the... The clerk can explain, uh... Who has gotten through that, um... Evaluation at... At this point. Each of the, uh... Qualified persons who've made it this far will get, uh... Five minutes to present to the Mayor and Council, uh... To provide a presentation as to why he or she believes that they are the right person to appoint to this position. Then, uh... The Mayor and Council can act on the ordinance that has been provided. The ordinance, uh... Would have the effect of appointing, uh... A person to, uh... Fill this position for the balance of the term. But there was one other, uh... Important qualification and direction that the Mayor and Council previously gave and which is now incorporated into the ordinance. And that is that the qualified person selected for this, uh... To fill this vacancy, uh... Would need to confirm, um... That he or she agrees that, um... They will not run for election for the Ward 3, uh... Position for the next subsequent term. Uh... So will not run in the election, whether that occurs, uh... In this year, 2021, or whether it's delayed until 2022. And the ordinance includes that provision as well. Uh... What I would suggest is that as each of the interested persons comes forward to present to the Mayor and Council, uh... That they begin their presentation by, uh... Confirming, uh... That they agree to that condition as part of, uh... Any appointment to fill the vacancy. Um... So that's all I have. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions if, uh... Either now or as we proceed tonight.
Um... I think we're... We have our guests, um... Our applicants in attendance. I just wanted to start item three by saying that, in total, seven applicants submitted their applications. I'm very happy that there was interest from the community, um... That there were seven Tussonans willing and ready to step up and serve. Um... Of the seven applications, um... Five met the criteria set forth in the charter. And so I just want to make sure that we have the five applicants in attendance today, Mr. Clerk. And if the applicants have access to turn on their camera.
So, Your Honor, we have, um... The five that, uh... You mentioned, one of those has withdrawn, uh... Her application for appointment. Uh... We also had another applicant that will not be joining the meeting this evening, so we would consider that also withdrawal. So this evening, you'll have three applicants, uh... To consider for the position.
Okay, so, um... We have, um... I had received word from you that Clayton Abernathy, um... Did not qualify, um... Did not live in the city for three years, did not live in Ward 3. Ms. Linda Duran, um... Did not qualify as well. Ms. Robin McCartel withdrew, and Mr. Mitch Preston is not in attendance, and we will take that, um... As a withdrawal.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to start item three. Item three, at this time, each individual who has submitted their resume to the city clerk by 5:00 PM Friday, February 26th, and who meets the qualica... Qualifications of the office will be given five minutes to make a presentation to Mayor and Council. What I will do is I will take the applicants, um... In alphabetical order, by last name. And, uh... You'll be given five minutes. At the four-minute, 30-second mark, the city clerk will let you know that there's 30 seconds remaining, which at that point I'd like for you to come to a conclusion. At the end of the three presentations of the applicants, we will have a couple of questions that, um... For the purposes of fairness, I put two questions, um... That I will ask the... The three applicants, and then we'll have a 20-minute open question and answer period by my colleagues on the council. So... But the presentations will come first, and we'll go, um... In alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Michael Crawford. Mr. Crawford, thank you so much for... For your interest in, uh... And submitting your resume and letter of interest. I, you know, I did my homework this weekend. I appreciate your, um... Your interest in serving the residents of Ward 3. I know you've served them before on the city council, and I appreciate, um... Your statements, uh... In terms of the interest put in your letter. Um... Are you amenable? Um... One of the issues that we talked about in terms of Mayor and Council is that we do not want to have, um... Individuals that are running for the full term, uh... Apply for this. That we feel that Mayor and Council should not put their thumb on the scale, um... In terms of giving anyone a leg up, uh... To replace Mr. Durham. And I just want to make sure that we put it into the record that you are, um... In agreement with... With that, um... Prerequisite and that you will not seek, um... To run for the Ward 3 council seat.
Sure, I would be happy to affirm, but if I was appointed to fill out the remainder of Councilmember Durham's term, that I would not seek, uh... Election to the office in the next cycle. Would affirm that, sure.
All righty, well, thank you so much, and you have five minutes.
Sure. Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see, uh... You, and this... Be nicer if it was in person, but, uh... Um... Let me say that, uh... You can't go wrong with whoever you appoint of the three people that are, um... Still left in the going. Um... I've known Karen for s... For a very long time, and she is a wonderful person and did a great job when she was on the city council, and, um... Can't go wrong with whoever you appoint of the three people that are, um... Still left in the going. You guys getting an echo? Getting an echo? Yeah. There we go.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I ask, um... Those in attendance to put themselves on mute.
Um... Let me... I'll probably be brief. I mean, I think I said most of what I wanted to say in the letter, but, uh... One thing is, you know, why am I seeking appointment? And, uh... And, uh... The main reason is because of the... The duck pond at Reed Park. No, I'm just kidding, that was a joke. No? Yeah, I got a smile out of Councilmember Santa Cruz, so... It's not because of Duck Pond at, uh... Reed Park, but, uh... As I said in my letter, I think that, uh... Our... Our country and the world and our communities are at crisis with regard to climate change. I think that it's a, um... It's the number one and pretty much only thing that we should... Every decision we make should be focused on, um... How everything that we do affects that. Um... We... I think we only have a... I... Every research paper I look at or article I read terrifies me more and more. I just read a article, uh... About the, um... Current flow in the Atlantic Ocean and how it's slowing down and how it is... It is as slow as it's ever been in the last 1,600 years, and that it's going to reach a point of no return at some point, where it will stop, and that will eventually change the weather patterns as we've recently seen in, you know, the dramatic weather, uh... Events that we've had throughout this country are only going to get worse and worse. And so I appreciate the council and the mayor and the council's efforts in those regards, and I know Councilmember Durham was... Was a huge solar advocate, as am I. I have solar on my house. I put solar on, uh... Rental properties I own. We're getting ready to install solar on our businesses as best we can, and I just think that I'm... Appreciate the council's efforts in those regards, um... Especially with regard to electric vehicles and so forth. I've had an opportunity to work with some of you in the past, um... Through various, you know, uh... Things that have been going on in the community. Um... I've volunteered a lot down in, uh... In the downtown area with the Rirato Theater and with the Downtown Tucson Partnership, things that are near and dear to my heart, and, um... I know the council's taken a strong effort in those regards as well, so... I, um... Uh... Have watched, you know, when you... When you've done the job, and Karen can relate to this, when you've done the job and you're out of it, you know, you get a whole different perspective about, uh... What it takes to do the job, and it's, I... Um... People, you can't really get that feeling until you're in it, and you've had to... Some of us had to work outside jobs while we worked the job just to be able to pay our bills, and, um... And the strain that puts on your families and your, um... Loved ones is... Is a lot, but, uh... I'm at a point in time in my life where I've got the ability to... To spend more time, um... Doing public service, and it's one of the reasons I threw my name in the hat, so... Or in the ring, I should say, but, uh... So I appreciate your time, and I first appreciate what all you guys do, especially this last year. It's been one hell of a year, um... And, uh... Think you guys have, uh... Done an admirable job under the circumstances and hope to keep it up no matter what your decision is today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Really appreciate your time. Our next, um... Applicant is Bonnie Polos. Bonnie, hi, how are you? Thank you so much for your interest.
I'm good, thank you.
So, just going to do the same for the record. Want to make sure that you affirm that you have no interest in running for the Ward 3, um... Council seat.
I have no interest in running for the Ward 3 council seat. I look at this as a very unique opportunity.
Thank you so much, Bonnie. Really appreciate your interest in serving the residents of Ward 3. Again, you're going to have five minutes, and, um... Mr. Clerk is going to be keeping time, um... And he will give you a 30-second warning, which at that time, I'd like to make sure that you wrap up and come to your conclusion. And, um... It's your floor.
Okay, thank you. Uh... Thank you for the opportunity to address you all tonight. I'd like to give you just a little background about myself and explain why I think I'd be a good choice for this appointment. For almost four decades, since 1982, I've not only been a resident of Ward 3, but I've really been actively involved Tussonian. Uh... Over the years, uh... People I've worked with in the community have suggested that I run for council, and my answer was always no. My professional career commitments really gave me very little flexibility to take on the job, and I really felt like I was effective learning why we make the decisions that we do, and then using that knowledge to tackle specific impact in issues that either impacted me directly or impacted areas of the city that I really care about. Transportation and roadway planning, transit and alternate modes, land use planning and development, stormwater management, regional water and wastewater, uh... Concerns, and the city charter were all areas that I really needed to learn about, and I did that. Each step along the way has been a learning experience, uh... Some more painful than others, um... And oftentimes, the outcome wasn't what we had hoped for. But I have to say that every time we participated, the end result was better than if we had not participated. And it was obvious from the people that I've worked with on issues and on committees, all had something to contribute to the issue that we were discussing. Now that I'm retired from my career in science, I have the time and the flexibility to devote to this position. And although I know stepping into a council term midway means a lot of catching up, I would depend on the excellent staff that Councilmember Durham assembled in Ward 3 to help me come up to speed very quickly on the pressing issues. I am committed to making this position a full-time job during the months that are left in this term, and I would do my homework for each of them so that I could participate fully in your deliberations. I believe my background in immunology and virology actually would be an asset during this pandemic. I will have no trouble coming up to speed on that front. I understand the practical measures that we need to slow down the spread, and I will be a vocal advocate for our most powerful tool for returning to normalcy, and that means getting everybody vaccinated. I see serving on the council really as an opportunity to realize a long-term vision, that we need to recognize... that we need to recognize the enormous resource that our community provides. And we really need to find ways to capitalize on that. One of those ways is to build into all of our processes a way to get meaningful input from the public and especially those who are most impacted from whatever's being proposed. We need to do that early and not after the decisions are made and money has been invested. Talking to each other beforehand at least gives us a starting place for understanding those things we agree on and what we need to resolve. The current health crisis has really exacerbated our problems. Homelessness, food insecurity, job loss, care for the vulnerable in our population. Now is a time when we need more than ever to connect with all of our citizens to find those who are in need, but also to find those who can help us make change possible. I found a quote about a year or so ago that has guided me recently. And it goes, "We build good community by building on good ideas, not by attacking other people's work or by getting bogged down in controversies that have no clear resolution." I really would like to be appointed to the Ward Three seat to be able to use that time to continue building good community. In closing, I'd like to thank all the people who supported my application. And I appreciate the opportunity that I've been given to be considered for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. I really appreciate your time. And now we have Karen Ulich. And Karen, I don't see you.
I'm here.
Alrighty, great. So, I just want to make sure that for the record, you are not willing to run for a new term for the Ward Three council seat.
Yes, I commit to not running for the Ward Three council seat.
Thank you so much for your interest. And again, you have five minutes. At the 4:30 mark, Mr. Clerk is going to just give you a 30-second warning. And at that time, please come to a conclusion. Thank you, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Romero and council members. I am very grateful to be among the folks being considered for this position and really do share respect for Michael and Bonnie and Robin. It's great to see you as well. I haven't seen you for a long time. But just really appreciate this opportunity and the, just the caliber of community leaders willing to step up is something that I think is noteworthy. I, you know, I touched on, I think, a lot of the main points in my cover letter and included my resume with my submission to the clerk. And I am submitting my name to a great extent because I was asked to by Councilmember Durham. And just his reasoning resonated with me. I share the concern that we are in the midst of extraordinary times, obviously, and that the pandemic has had very serious impacts to community health, families and workers, small businesses. It's an extraordinary time. I know Councilmember Durham regretted needing to step back for a number of months. And I was really, I was honored that he reached out to me and suggested I fulfill the rest of his term. You know, what I noted in my cover letter, and I think Michael alluded to this, clearly, it can be, it's an all-consuming job. There's no way around it. And there's tremendous substance to study and understand, and also very complex dynamics and important public process in the decision-making that carries with this office. So, over the weekend and beyond that, I've really tried to study up on some of the compelling items before you, of course, building on the strategic plan that you all adopted and developed, understanding that and being able to support progress on that strategic plan as well as the budget. There are many priorities, including climate action, that are highlighted there and in the good actions of the mayor and council to date. Land use issues are also obviously always of great importance to our community. I was really happy to see the Santa Cruz overlay progress at the last meeting. That was really spearheaded by Councilmember Durham and I think can make a great difference in a very hard-hit area of our community and of Ward Three. It's part of that whole thrive in the O5 effort, which is so critical to not only the residents in that immediate area, but it is of importance to the entire community, I believe. And there are tremendous potentials. Great progress has been made along the Miracle Mile and in partnership with Old Pasqua and the San Ignacio Council, as well as Pima College Downtown, the residents of the Tucson House. It is really, I think it's a model of community engagement, including diverse voices and interests to make sure that we make progress in a very stressed area of the community. Of course, related to the budget, you know, I think I've only heard applause for the mayor and council for investing in additional funds in roads. I know that Prop 101 Tucson delivers. A decision will be need to be made very soon about whether to refer that to the ballot and not, and allow voters to decide whether to continue that vital support for roads and community safety. In addition, I think that, you know, efforts to address equity, including the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development, so many things that you all have initiated, those are important. And I just want to assure you that my studies have begun and will continue. And I would hope to join as a colleague who can help our community make progress together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karen. What I'll do is I'll ask a couple of questions of each and then open it up for my colleagues on the council for Q and A. We'll limit that to 20 minutes. But first, I'd like to pose the same questions to the three of you just to make sure that we're giving, you know, the opportunity for the three to answer. And you can elaborate on what you've already stated. The first question, and we'll do it again in alpha order. First question is for Mr. Crawford. What are your priorities for Ward Three specifically?
Specifically for Ward Three, I mean, and it's pretty sad that it's probably still the same priority it was when I was on the city council 26 years ago, which is neighborhood streets. I mean, our, and it's obvious the council knows that, given the recent funding set aside that you did. And, but anybody that's driven around Ward Three and some of the neighborhoods and just the neighborhood streets were just appalling. And we've got to find a solution to it. You know, I get so angry when I hear how much money that was wasted on the border wall. What was it, about 1.8 billion just in Arizona? If we would have taken that 1.8 billion dollars and invested, we could have probably fixed every neighborhood street in the city of Tucson. And what kind of community would we have then? I mean, just imagine if every neighborhood and street in Tucson looked like the best neighborhood street in Tucson. I mean, it would be, it would be, it would be wonderful. And so, that would be one of the major things that I would, I would be pushing.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Bonnie, Ms. Polos, the same question. What are your priorities for Ward Three?
Well, I think one of my top priorities would be doing an evaluation of all the housing stock in Ward Three. We are a very diverse ward. We go from fairly affluent, middle-class neighborhoods to neighborhoods that are on the edge to being places where people are moving out of and fleeing. And I think that the housing stock that we have within our ward needs to be evaluated with regard to what housing needs to be rehabilitated, what housing is abandoned that we need to move owners on either redeveloping or bringing into some kind of city inventory that we can use to help eliminate homelessness. Because when we have vacant and derelict housing within our community, it degrades the entire neighborhood. That whole area starts to move out. People start not caring about what's going on because the houses around them look like people don't care anymore. And I think that taking an evaluation of our housing stock has to be a priority, especially in wards like Ward Three where we have struggling areas, areas near the interstate where we really need to be making some kind of investment. And by knowing what our housing stock is, knowing where things are working well and where we need to really invest some money, I think is the first step towards resolving some of our housing issues.
Thank you, Ms. Polos. Ms. Ulich, same question.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Yeah, I think the core city services, the basics, need to be addressed. And so, what I continue to hear from folks, to Michael's point earlier, streets are critical and those core services that folks look to their city to deliver on. And so, those charter-prescribed services, including streets, I think is a top priority and matters greatly to the residents of Ward Three. I also believe that economic development, which, you know, includes community development, includes land use, it does include making sure that we're creating economic opportunity for the residents of Ward Three. It is one of the most diverse wards in the entire city. And it is also one that has disproportionate challenges like poverty. And so, I'd love to continue working on that.
Thank you. And the second question I have for you all, and thank you for, by the way, for keeping your answers brief so that we can have additional Q and A towards the end. What challenges do you anticipate in the city with our budget, whatever you'd like to expand on? So, what challenges do you anticipate? And then we'll start with Mr. Crawford.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, obviously, funding, that's always the number one problem, especially with regard to roads and tax revenue to be able to use for that. And, you know, I've always, and this is not news to any of you, but the, you know, the major issue, and I don't know if it'll ever be solved in my lifetime, is this, the state shared revenue proportion, the deficiency that we have with the state. I know you all are aware of it. I, last I checked, it was over $100 million that we send up to Phoenix that doesn't come back. Back when I was on the council, it was 50 million. And it's just only gotten worse. I'm scared to even find out what the real number is. But until we, until we solve that major problem, you know, we are getting blood dry by Phoenix. And, you know, I guess, I think the only way is to try to get legislators elected from our community that understand that and are willing to fight for the people down here to get that law changed in some way that will allow that unincorporated area to get incorporated so that those state shared revenues can be used to improve our community and not the Phoenix community. And I think that's probably the major, major source of revenue that we could capture if we were able to get those unincorporated areas into incorporate. Plus, that would free up the county budget as well, where they spend, you know, our tax dollars to improve the county residents that don't live in the cities, you know, area. So, I mean, that's the challenge. I think it's pretty obvious that all of us see. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Councilmember Cunningham, I'll come to you after we go through this question with all the applicants, and then we'll start a, you know, free-flow Q and A. Ms. Polos, same question. What challenges do you anticipate?
Well, I think Michael was right. Funding is always our biggest challenge. But at the moment, COVID is really driving a lot of economic issues right now. And so, for me, the biggest challenge will be to get the state to free up the vaccinations that we need, to be able to coordinate with private pharmacies, to be providing vaccinations for everyone that needs it. Without that, we are not going to be able to get back to any sense of normalcy. We are not going to be able to open our restaurants and our community spaces and places where people can really share ideas and come together as a community. And I see a lot of disconnect, maybe not with the younger generation because they are not afraid of technology and it's part of their everyday lives. But I do see a lot of isolation among the older population, among people who are not comfortable doing this kind of meeting, being able to have this kind of interaction. And it really does impact our economy. I mean, there have been some excellent small businesses. Snyder at Loco has done so much for feeding people and keeping her employees employed by making food for people. There are other people in the community who have stepped up as well. And so, for me, getting people vaccinated and getting us back to where we can, go back to our jobs and interact freely is the biggest challenge I see in the next nine months.
Thank you, Ms. Polos. Ms. Ulich, same question.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Yeah, there's, there's no denying that, and I feel really grateful for the leadership at the county level and the city level to help us navigate this pandemic. I, you know, it's devastating for so many people. And I feel so fortunate just to have a home and to have not contracted the virus and to be able to work from home. You know, the first thing that occurred to me, quite frankly, is what is our community going to look like after? You know, how are we going to help communities heal that have been disproportionately impacted? You know, people of color, the elderly, their families. So, the health impacts and also our economy. I mean, Tucson prides, we pride ourselves on that local, that local small business driver that is our economy. And I don't know how best to make sure that we help those businesses emerge, reemerge and survive this next period, but it's critical. And as you all know, I was a champion of local first, bringing local first to Arizona, actually, to Tucson. And, you know, $7 return on every dollar spent with a local business versus other businesses. So, we know, and that's a value that we hold, I think, in Tucson.
Thank you, Ms. Ulich. And so, I want to open it up for questions from my colleagues. We'll make sure that this question and answer period is 20 minutes long, Mr. Clerk. In the interest of time, I ask my colleagues on the council to keep their questions brief and the applicants to keep their answers short. So, with that, I'd like to open up for my colleagues on the council. I see Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Councilmember Cunningham had his hand up first. But I will just say, because I don't have specific questions right now, because I wanted to thank everyone, the three of you had all reached out to my office and wanted to meet. And I made it a priority to clear my calendar for anyone who applied and wanted to meet one-on-one and chat. And I just want to thank the three of you for doing that and having the opportunity to connect one-on-one, each of you for, what, on Friday? And I got all of my questions answered then. So, I tried to come here prepared, having done my research and ready to have a conversation today. So, I would just get that out of the way, that I don't have any specific questions other than just wanted to share my gratitude to all three of you for stepping up to do this. And thank you all for your time and meeting with me previously to answer all of my questions. Thank you.
I do see Councilmember Cunningham's hand up. I do see Councilmember Cunningham's hand up, and you did put it up. Councilmember Cunningham, so go ahead, ask your question. And then we will have, I believe I see Councilmember Santa Cruz and then Councilmember Fimbres. Councilmember Kozaczek, did you have your hand up as well? Okay.
I had it up and pulled down when Nikki started talking, so we're good.
All righty, so Councilmember Cunningham and then Councilmember Santa Cruz.
To all three of you, I actually didn't meet with any of you. I wanted to be impartial. So, and quite frankly, I've known all three of you for over a decade or, you know. We're really lucky to have all three of you apply. All three of you are qualified. All three of you would do fine in this job. So I want to tell you, if you don't get it, just know that that doesn't, that means about zero. I mean, I know it's, we win no matter what. The city of Tucson wins today no matter what because whoever we pick, whether we pick today or we decide to install somebody on March 9th and deliberate over a week, either way, we win. That's really the main thing. I want to let you know, all three of you, I have the utmost respect for all three of you. You guys all got a lot of community support. Mike Crawford, your comments about state share revenues right now are like my whole reason of being lately. So, you know, you might have tipped the scales for me, but...
It'll drive you crazy if you think about it too much.
Yeah, I know. So again, I just want to thank you all for the comments and putting your time and caring about our city. And again, please stay engaged in our community no matter what happens.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Santa Cruz and then Councilmember Kozaczek and then Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question I had for the applicants is, you know, this past year during the pandemic has really amplified the vulnerabilities, like the vulnerabilities of our communities of color and communities that don't have access to healthcare and have had to, you know, continue working and making do throughout the pandemic. And we know they're going to be the most economically impacted, while at the same time, we've been dealing, you know, with racial and civil unrest because of police killings and, you know, just the protests and the call, you know, that has come to many of our cities of how we're going to hold police accountable. On one end, on the other end, a lot of folks in our community, we consider ourselves a super progressive city. We will put Black Lives Matter signs out, you know, and when things like this come up. But when it comes to the policies and the investments that need to be in place to actually show that, like, we do value black lives or we do value, you know, Latinx communities, we get a lot of pushback. So just wondering, what are your, you know, your ideas or the way that you would approach the work in this capacity?
I go first?
Yeah, we'll start. We'll stay with order.
Sure. No, that's a tough, it's a tough issue. And I've been on the board of the Downtown Tucson Partnership. Before it was called the Downtown Tucson Partnership, it was Tucson, I can't even remember the name of it, but it's been 20-some years. And we've struggled throughout that time trying to get, attract and keep minority-owned businesses downtown. And the pandemic has only made that worse. But I'm on a subcommittee with our group that we're working on trying to find ways to encourage minority-owned small businesses downtown. Not that that's to be all the end-all, just be downtown small businesses, but throughout the community as well. It's a struggle. Again, it goes back to the budget as well. I mean, I think that it's clear that throughout the community, and you can see it every day with regard to sending police officers to do jobs that are really not in their wheelhouse. And they react the way that they're trained. A lot of times, I mean, I was watching a show the other day where they were talking about how certain police officers are trained militaristically, and that's how they react. And so I think it goes back to a lot of that. And I think we have a great police chief. I've had a good opportunity to work with him on some downtown issues. I think that there's always room for improvement. I think that we, and I think the council's done a good job of holding people accountable. Those are the first things you got to do. People got to be held accountable for what their actions are. And, but, you know, it's a tough issue. And it's, all we can do is keep talking about it and try to implement things that will, that work and will accomplish what we're trying to do. And, I mean, I've come, I come from, I usually don't talk about it, but I grew up in the projects in Ohio and was dirt poor and was fortunate enough to qualify for some programs, government-assisted programs that got me through high school, got me through college, and eventually got me through law school. And those are the kinds of programs that, you know, allow people to better themselves and get an education and move forward. And you can't stress enough the education part of it. I mean, we've got to get our schools back open safely. Hopefully, with the new vaccine that's coming online, we can get all of our teachers vaccinated and get them back in the classroom and get that part of our economy, you know, running again. Because, I mean, I'm helping a neighbor friend of mine who's got her kids every other week, and she was going to lose her job. So her kids come to my house to, I homeschool them every other week. So, you know, I got a six-year-old and a nine-year-old who's doing Zoom classes. And it's a struggle. I mean, I feel for all you that have small children at home and have to make sure they're doing their Zoom class and they're engaged and those kinds of things. And so hopefully, we get these vaccinations rolled out and we get back to somewhat normalcy. And I think that will help in a lot of those areas where we can really get down to it and really tackle them.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Polos?
Thank you for that opportunity to talk on this issue. I think that what we need to do is actually make some inroads into entering the areas of problems for people. That would be poverty. Poverty, which means that you don't have good access to healthcare. You often don't have the time to spend on getting a good education. And I think that we have a real progressive police chief. I think he understands some of the issues that we're facing. As an individual who took on the role a number of years ago, he's demonstrated that he has a sensitivity to the issues that we're facing. And I think that we could work possibly to find a way to partner police people who are trained to deal with violent situations with caseworkers who can accompany them when they get 911 calls for things like mental distress or someone who is out of control with drugs. Because oftentimes, those things are a direct result of living in poverty and not having the advantages that many of us who are more privileged take for granted. And I think having the discussions with groups of people who are trying to make things better and letting us as leaders in the community know exactly what they need and then try to put together the funding and the people that we need in order to be able to address that. And I think the answer is not simply to throw money at a problem or to turn our backs on it because we don't have the money to throw at it, but to really sit down and have discussions with each other so that we can actually do real hands-on helping of people who are in poverty, who are vulnerable, who need care. And I think vaccine distribution in our poorer areas of the community, where perhaps we go out as a mobile entity to be able to bring those vaccines to them instead of having them have to come to that facility, I think would go a long way in letting people know that we want to try and make things better for them.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz, for your question and your leadership. You know, the pandemic has just brought so much to light that was already, I think, systemically a problem and throughout our entire society. I think public safety becomes a central focus because lives are on the line every time there's an interaction. And so for that reason, I do think that we need to make sure that we're continuing to invest. That budget, as Mayor George Miller always said, is a moral document. And we need to make sure that we're investing in responses that keep everybody safe and engender trust between public safety and our community. Everybody is safer. When we accomplish that, I don't have any answers, but I definitely think that this community can and needs to face that and continue to invest in that in no uncertain terms. And that goes for other investments as well. As you know, some time ago, the mayor and council adopted a policy where certain resources would be targeted and made available in areas that are, experience greater stress. And that's one example where we need to understand who's hurting, what can be of help, engage those residents in what solutions make sense, and invest and make it happen. And I think we need to be tireless toward that end.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozaczek?
Stop coughing first. I also want to thank all three of the folks who are in front of us tonight. I agree with Paul. We can't go wrong. All three of your quality people and all of my interactions with you have been positive for literally years. My question is as to this process. Last week, when we voted on this, Paul and I voted against this process because we felt that it was truncated. Back in 2010, when Cunningham was put on, the process took a month. It evolved over a month. We had 11 qualified applicants and received plenty of public input. Back in the last century, when Crawford came on the board, that process took between one and two months. And again, you know, lots of applicants, lots of public input, lots of interaction. I believe that people's voice should matter. And tonight alone, for me, doesn't really provide the public participation that each of you, I know, believes in as well. So I'm just curious, is your thoughts on this process? And that's it.
Crawford, and then Bonnie, and then Karen.
Yeah, back when I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the council in 1995, it was. And thanks for, the city attorney for reminding me that the law changed in 97, and he said it was because of me, because back then, the mayor actually couldn't vote to appoint a council member. So it was the city council left over, you know, four, you had to get four of the five council members that were left over. And I still remember, I didn't get one vote, and they'll go nameless. I don't, you know, hold grudges or anything. No, I'm just kidding. But, no, it's a, you know, it's a tough situation. I mean, I get it that there's a short period of time left in this term, and people want to get things together. And it does, it's not good to have a ward not having technically representation, even though the council staff at Ward Three has done a great job in keeping up constituent services and, you know, taking care of as much business as they could. But anytime somebody takes a leave of absence and then steps down, you want to move as quickly as possible. And, yeah, I don't know what the sufficient time is. It is quick, but, you know, it is what it is. It's, as they say, it takes four votes. You get four votes, you can do pretty much what you want. So, but whatever the outcome is, you know, again, Bonnie would be great, Karen would be great. And however which way you guys decide to go, I think that you can't go wrong, so.
Thank you, Ms. Polos.
Thank you for that opportunity. Yes, the process was fairly quick. I know things aren't normal and they haven't been for quite some time. But I guess my biggest regret is not really having the time to interact with different council members to perhaps shadow one or two of them while they were going about part of their day to get a real sense of how the job would unfold. I know Michael and Karen have both had experience as council members, but as someone who has usually been on the opposite side of the table, that is something that I think I could have benefited from. And also, my interactions with most of you have been in situations where we're dealing with an issue and we're not really dealing with policy and how things really run on a day-to-day basis. So yes, I regret that there wasn't time to do that, but we're here today. And I think all three of us came very prepared. I do think it's a little unfair that Michael had to answer every question first, but I...
It's okay.
He did a fabulous job, so thank you very much.
Ms. Ulrich?
Thank you. And yeah, Michael, your sense of humor is shining tonight, which I'm genuinely appreciating. I always have, and even in this setting. So, yeah, it's, you know, I think we can look back and see how things are different right now. This process has been different. I think there are some reasons for that. You know, there has been, in essence, a vacancy already for Ward Three. And I think Councilmember Durham recognized that when he temporarily needed to have an excused leave of absence. And so public participation being important means, you know, residents of Ward Three having a seat at the table. And whatever's on the agenda for March 9th, you know, ideally having a voice on those matters and obviously well beyond that. You know, and the process is already a bit different than it has been historically because you all decided not to allow people who plan to run for office to be appointed. So there's just so many choices, and I don't envy you. There are, no matter what the choices are, there are going to be folks with criticism about that. I think, you know, initially, when I heard about this convening, you know, even coordinating the schedules of seven applicants, now there are three, and your schedules and making things accessible to the public in this environment. Is it accessible to folks who can't watch meetings and participate online? I think there, I guess what I'm saying is, there will be criticism regardless. And I think, given the unique circumstances, it's not, it's not an easy choice to face. But I do appreciate how you've handled it to date. I do appreciate being here with Michael and Bonnie and even the other applicants. I thought it was a great expression of interest and a great set of folks who did step forward and who want to serve Tucson. So I'm proud to be a part of the group included.
Thank you so much. I did see the hand of Councilmember Fimbres earlier on. I just wanted to...
I'm still here, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Fimbres, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for being here, doing the interviews and applying for this special position in these unique times. It is a sign of the times, Karen. There are unique circumstances now. We're going through a pandemic which nobody has ever done before, so that's a challenge, a special challenge. And I thank Michael, I thank Bonnie, and I thank Karen yourself and the other four applicants that applied that we researched over the weekend. And you guys are remarkable. And I've got, I heard lots of things positive about Michael and about Bonnie and yourself, Karen. We worked with you for a while. So one of my questions is, during the pandemic, the mayor council have followed the CDC and PC/HD guidelines. And what do you feel about this? Because it's been sometimes controversial about this.
We'll start. I'm sorry, Michael, but I've been called out, and so I'll have Bonnie start this.
See what you get, Bonnie. See?
Oh, no. Careful what I say.
So go ahead, Paulos.
Well, when I was at school at Berkeley, working on my degree, I was in the School of Public Health, and I learned a lot about epidemiology. One of my prelim questions, I think I cited Dr. Fauci's, one of his papers. He was someone who was publishing quite a bit at the time. And I have a great respect for the CDC and the people who work there. I think it's very unfortunate that healthcare, wearing masks, protecting each other, became so politicized and was subject to such a lack of leadership. And I really believe that, with a pandemic especially, we don't have all the answers. Science is designed to experiment, to look at the data, to be able to have time to assess what's real and what's not real, what's effective and what's not effective. And I think that the criticism that, oh, well, the CDC told us this last week, but now they have told us that something different this week. And that's really because they have more information. They didn't have all the information they needed about how this was spread. We know it's not spread primarily by handling objects, that it's really something that's aerosolized, and so therefore, being able to stop those microdroplets from getting from one person to another was important. And as we've seen with recent data about this flu season, those precautions probably kept most of us from getting the flu as well, and prompted many of us to get the kinds of vaccines we needed for the flu this year, which we might not have done if this pandemic hadn't been there and we hadn't been hearing from the experts in the field. I really believe that what we need to do is accept the fact that we have a few answers about COVID, but we really don't have all the answers. We don't know why it persists. We don't know why some people get ill and die and other people don't. But we're learning more and more, and we're becoming better at what we're doing. I also think that the lockdown that happened earlier last year was the accepted response to a pandemic. And the experts had thought, this is the best way we're going to deal with it. And then, when it actually happened, we learned the serious repercussions of that, and we came up with better ways of trying to get people to self-isolate, to take precautions. And so, I think the guidelines that have been put in place are excellent. I think they're going to change because we get more information, and I think our job is to reassure the public that we are doing absolutely the best that we can to keep everyone safe and to help get through this.
Thank you. Ms. Ulrich, and then we'll finish off with Mr. Crawford.
Yeah, Bonnie, I really appreciate, quite frankly, I knew you were a scientist. I had forgotten your area of expertise, but it's really, it's good to hear you address this. I agree. I think following the guidance from the CDC, I think you all have taken very difficult positions to keep the community safe. And again, you know, we have to acknowledge the disproportionate impacts of the pandemic. It's about keeping ourselves safe, and our neighbors, and other community members, and certain, you know, essential workers, people of color, the elderly, the more vulnerable. It was, I think, our duty, and I think you've led us well as a mayor and council, with the best information available.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. I, you know, it's so silly that we have to fight over, just wear a mask. I mean, it's so aggravating. I mean, I almost got in a fight at a Home Depot about four months ago because people were running around with no masks on. And I'm just like, it's just that simple. You know, we've had a, I have owned parts of a couple of small businesses in town, and we were considered an essential business, and we had to stay open. And we had about 60 to 80 employees that we had to protect, and we had to let probably 10 of our employees take a leave of absence because they have immune compromise issues. And it was a struggle. And but we did, we did, you know, we followed the guidelines. We follow the guidelines to this day, and we'll continue to do so until we get everybody vaccinated and we get back to some semblance of normal. But, you know, you don't come into our store without a mask on. If you don't wear it correctly, you get the boot, and you don't get, you know, you get one warning, and that's it. And I think that that's, you know, I appreciate what the mayor and council have tried to do. I know you've had your hands tied with our, I better be careful. I know we're on public airways, but our governor has not done his job, in my opinion, especially with the money that he's holding now, basically hostage with regard to vaccines and testing. It's a disgrace, but I think that you all have done a great job, given those limitations that you've had. And I would support wholeheartedly those limitations and also working to try to, you know, do what we can safely. And I know everybody wants it open quickly. Let's go, go, go. But as we saw what happened, you know, we thought it was bad over the summer, and then we got to the fall, and we're still, you know, everybody thinks it's a hunky-dory. Now, we're still at 68,000 cases a day in the United States, and it's not going down now. It's leveled off because I think we all are getting complacent because we have vaccines, and we think that it's, we're on the right track, which we are. Don't get me wrong, but, you know, all the experts that I've looked at, and the scientists, and I appreciate, again, Bonnie's expertise in these issues as well, is that we've got to get these vaccinations rolled out before these variants take hold. And it's a race of time right now. And so, I always tell people, you know, which vaccine should I get? Any one of them, get it. You know why? Because zero people have died that have gotten the vaccine from COVID. Zero. So whatever one you can get, when it's your time, get it, and try to encourage your family members and everyone else to get it. I have a bunch of people in my life that don't get vaccines and don't want to get vaccines, and I'm doing my best to try to educate them and get them in there. But I think that that's something I know the council has taken very seriously and that, you know, should continue to do. So thank you.
Your Honor, you are beyond the 20-minute limit.
Okay. Thank you, Roger. I really appreciate it. So with that, let me see. We've gone through item four without announcing it. Item five, it's City Manager's Communication Number 64, dated March 1st, is received interim, made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11820 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11820 relating to appointment to fill a vacancy on the city council, appointing blank as Ward 3 council member for the city of Tucson, establishing that the appointee shall serve for the remainder of the term of office and shall not seek subsequent election and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Fimbras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to thank the Michael, Bonnie, Karen for their interest in this position at these really trying times right now. People, I want to thank the others that submitted their resumes in regards to the vacant Ward 3 position, and their willingness to commit to serve in our community. Our city is facing many challenges. The mayor and council is in the middle of discussions about the current fiscal year's budget, as well as the budget for the next fiscal year, dealing with the ramifications of the COVID-19 health pandemic on our community, working to help those affected by the COVID-19 pandemic to survive through this, and working to ensure the good citizens of Tucson can get tested and vaccinated for COVID-19 so we can get our lives back to some kind of order. We have a person who has submitted their application, who has served during times of financial crisis and health crisis with our water during the 1-4 Daxen, PFAS and PFAS and TCE. We have someone who is experienced with dealing with our city budget and city departments. We have someone who has worked successfully with our neighborhood associations on issues such as student housing, the group dwelling ordinance, and the neighborhood preservation ordinance. We have someone who has supported me and my office on the formation of the Homeless Coalition, and supporting the Tucson Homeless Work Program. We have someone who has worked with me in the efforts for more affordable housing in Tucson, and who can work on the Housing First Program and Tucson's first Housing First Director. We have someone who has experience and is willing to serve in the interim to ensure representation for Ward 3. I want to place in nomination Karen Ulrich, the former Ward 3 council member. Karen does have the experience and can jump into the discussion for Ward 3. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
So I have a few things on this item. And first of all, make no mistake when I tell you that each person who has applied is pretty amazing. We've got a person who, at the time of COVID, is somewhat the logical choice. She's an immun biologist that worked, that studied monoclonal antibodies, which came to the forefront this past year in solving the COVID mystery. I mean, Regeneron's got the only thing that kind of demonstrating any efficacy. We've got Mike Crawford, who, there's so many things I can say about Mike Crawford knowing him the last 25 years. He's almost the big brother I wish I had sometimes.
Keep it clean, Paul.
I can't tell you how much respect I have for you over the years. You seem to have your hand in everything in the community. You seem to have some type of connection on so many, you're like Spider-Man, dude. You're like a web through the entire community. And not only that, I can't tell you how much I look up to you because of how you conquered so much adversity and everything else, and you also used to be the Ward 3 council. And Karen, and Karen and I have come a long way, but the bottom line is, is that this is an honest, this is probably one of the most honest public servants I've ever had the pleasure, not that everybody I have is honest, but Karen's, like, dedication to process and to integrity of process actually taught me a lot about myself and about the city. We have three candidates. My plan tonight was to make a motion to actually push this off to March 2nd, to March 9th, because I wanted us to all have an opportunity to meet each candidate. I'm actually not going to make that motion because I'm familiar with all three of our candidates, and they're all outstanding. On a personal level, going back in my years, and I remember when he first got appointed, I felt like that I got appointed, I'd want to go with Crawford just because that's my guy. But, and Mike, don't take this the wrong way, but right now, I think that bringing Karen back is actually a good move. She is coming off the budget three years ago, and we need her to fill the hole this year and run the budget this year. Bonnie, your community support, it's so much easier for me to say, hey, we should get Bonnie, because you had so many different neighbors. I don't, I didn't have that many neighbors when I applied for the job. I mean, it's unbelievable how many neighbors you had. But again, one of the things that kind of brought me to a head is that, you know, Durham's on his way out, and he actually asked for Karen. So for me, that got me to this point. Had we had a couple other candidates that I didn't know and wasn't familiar with, and had wanted to give them a chance to meet, I definitely would have pushed this off and seen kind of how this process shakes out. But based on the questions tonight, and still, Mike gets the most points because of his state share revenue answer, but after all the process tonight, and looking everything holistically, I think Karen's the right choice, and I'm going to go ahead and support Councilmember Fimbras's motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Santa Cruz, and then Councilmember Kozaczek. You're on mute.
The Councilmember Kozaczek had his hand up first. Mine went after his.
I actually forgot that it was up, so go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I don't have the, you know, the privilege of knowing everybody, all the applicants personally, like my other colleagues on the council. This is, you know, my first term in office, but I can tell you that, you know, I do know, I know Karen, in 2005, when she first got elected, it was the first time that I was able to vote for the city of Tucson. And I remember her election was historic, you know, the first time we elected a person that was LGBTQ, you know, and was out. And I remember their work too with the payday lending and making sure that we were addressing the needs of people that were experiencing homelessness, from housing to jobs. And I got to meet George Pettit, you know, because of her, and he always had such important role in my life. And so, what I always admired about Karen was how unapologetic, you know, she was and how she showed up, and that it gave a lot of us, I was, you know, 20 years old when that happened, just like permission as women, as queer femmes, to like step into leaderships of, positions of leadership, like in the city. So I feel, you know, right now, that with a lot of the social unrest, and I know that a lot of the different issues that we're talking about are really important, but if we're not seeing the intersections that this has, you know, with race, and how we're trying to address equity at this time, as we're talking about the pandemic, as we're talking about health, as we're talking about food and housing insecurity, and establishing a new normal, because the normal before left a lot of us out. And so, making sure that the new normal, the new systems that we put in place are really going to help meet the immediate needs that vulnerable communities have, that communities of color have at this time, but also set, you know, do a paradigm shift for how we're going to continue to do business in the future. So even, I hope I have the pleasure of getting to work with you, Mr. Crawford and Mrs. Bonnie Polos. But at this time, you know, I'm in support of having Ms. Ulrich move forward in this position.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to repeat what a lot of my colleagues have said because I share a lot of the same sentiment. Again, just wanted to share my gratitude for everyone who applied and thank the three of you. I don't believe, Councilmember Cunningham, that it was impartial of me to meet with the three of them. I wanted to be transparent and accessible, and I don't have the relationships that a lot of you have. So I actually consider doing my job to make myself available for this process. So again, I want to thank all three of you. I learned a lot about you, and I think you all are amazing, so I do hope to continue working with you all. I, in reflecting on this decision, I have been on this job for 15 months myself, and I think it took a good six to nine months really to settle into the job. So I think, as a lot of my colleagues have said, it's just imperative that we put the person in this position who is really ready to hit the ground on day one. And I also support putting Karen in this critical role at this critical moment in time. So thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kozaczek.
Thanks. I agree with Paul that walking into tonight, my preference was to, let's push this, let's give people a chance to weigh in. The public's voice is what's lacking in this. Bonnie, you got a boatload of people showing support by email, and I respect that, and a lot of them, I wrote back saying, yeah, Bonnie, be great. And Michael would be great, and Karen would be great, but I didn't write that on all the emails. So my concern coming into tonight is that we're voting as much on a process as on a person. And that's the reason I asked the question that I did. And none of the three candidates seemed to have particular heartburn about the process. So I would be the odd man out saying, okay, well, I do. The... Lost that train of thought. I've got brain fog from a second dose. How's, you can believe that? So my first phone call is going to be to, I can count to four. I can count to five. I can count to six. So we know where this is going, and my first phone call... phone call will be to Karen to talk about, because our wards are joined at the hip, talk about some of the current issues that we've got going on. I will have to say for the record, though, I, you know, back, back in 2010, when Cunningham came on, me, I, Karen, and Rahina, at the time, Councilmember for Ward One, all said we felt good about the process, and that the people in the community had the opportunity to voice their input. Functionally, that office has been vacant for six months. Another couple of weeks wouldn't have killed us. But I appreciate the fact that all of you embraced the process, and so I'll be a team player and go with that. And I'll be in touch with you, Karen.
Thank you, Councilmember Kozaczek. First, I want to thank the three of you for going through the process that we've had. We have heard from the community. We have heard from many neighbors, many business owners, nonprofit organizations, other elected officials on the record of the support that the three of you have. You know, I think the Charter is very clear, that it says, mayor and council vote on who will, will finish a term. And we've done that. And at the different points in history where we've had to appoint someone to finish, you know, another elected official's term, we did, we were not living through a pandemic. And, you know, we have had this particular seat because of personal reasons for Councilmember Durham essentially vacant for, for three months, which is when Councilmember Durham realized that he needed some time. And so, I believe that because we're living during a pandemic, we are already in the process, knee-deep in the process of budgeting. And because we have amazing qualified candidates, and that are willing to serve the rest of Councilmember Durham's term, we have, we have the opportunity to make that decision right now. We don't, we don't have to wait. We don't have to wait. We, we know that this step is necessary, and that frankly, we have three wonderful candidates. And the motion and the second to replace Councilmember Durham with Councilmember Ulrich, who by the way, has been elected by the people of Ward Three and served them honorably for 12 years, is a, is an amazing opportunity for, for, for the residents of Ward Three to have a voting member on the city council in our next meeting, which is March 9th. So I appreciate you all. I absolutely thank you for your hard work. Because even though those of you that will not be appointed, those two of you that will not be appointed today, I know for a fact that you will continue serving the residents of Ward Three and the residents of Tucson. There's, there's no doubt in my mind that you will. So with that, thank you all. Thank you, colleagues. And thank you to those present. With that, I want to make sure that Councilmember Fimbres's motion also includes the adoption of Ordinance Number 11820.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. And with a motion and a second, let's go to roll call. Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Mayor Omero.
Aye. Congratulations, Councilmember Ulrich. You will join us hopefully for March 9th. Be ready for that. Congratulations. Michael and Bonnie, really appreciate your interest. And to my colleague on the council, that Ordinance 11820 passes by a vote of 6-0. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a safe evening.
We adjourned, Karen.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March 9th, 2020. Congratulations, Councilmember Ulrich.
Well done, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good luck, everyone.
Do I need to stay, Roger?
Karen, if you could stay, I'd be happy to do your oath right now.
Sure.
And Madam Mayor, who's left.